October 22nd. Five.
Thirty-six.
Five thirty-six.
Hello, hello.
Hey, Rob.
Hello. Have a seat. Be comfy.
Where would you like me to sit?
Wherever there's a little packet there.
Here you go.
Welcome. Yeah, well.
I just got here myself.
Okay, so you're gonna want the invoice.
We'll start with bills.
And, oh, and that's for the things that are in the box. That's two.
I didn't see any sense in pointing them out, but this is what they look like.
And you even have one up. I've got it just under the way.
But we've got five with your name on it.
Are you sworn in?
I am, yeah. Great. I'm Kathy today.
Great, great, great.
I'll make a motion to approve the Den Brothers' bill for...
One sixty-three fifty.
One sixty-three fifty for the name plates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I need to sign this?
Yes.
Turn it, turn it.
And that's the only thing we have for a bill.
Okay, we've got minutes to approve.
Which one do you want to do first?
September twenty-fourth. It's the older one. One on top should be the first one.
I'm staying from that because you're gonna have to...
I'll make a motion to approve the September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen minutes, as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Regarding the October fifteenth minutes. Uh, under new business, the paragraph that starts with Jim Tromke. Second line. Vacancy, uh, that Rob, Mr. Chauvin will complete the term of the vacancy of the planning board until the annual town election, instead of meeting.
Oh, it's not meeting? It's election?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only amendment I have.
Do we have a second?
I second. Okay, good. You seconded it.
All in favor?
You were a little too quiet there.
Aye.
Aye.
That's it for minutes. Do we have some correspondence there?
Pardon?
The Friends of Granby Veterans.
Yes. Um, did you want to do that? I think that's under, yeah, that's under correspondence, yeah.
Let me read it.
Go ahead, it's fine.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is a letter from the Friends of Granby Veterans dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. To whom it may concern. I request an extension to the permit that was issued which allowed a sign to be erected announcing the future site of the Granby Veterans Memorial at the corner of State Street and North Street. The extension is needed due to construction delays. The construction plans are with a landscape architect and they are expected to be completed by November, by mid-November. I request an extension for the permit until August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Respectfully, Jason Richard.
Do we need to approve the wall they're putting up?
I believe so. Unless they've finished the site plan yet.
So, I assume we'll see it after the architect's done with the drawings and all that.
Yeah, the final drawings.
Nobody seems to know where it's going. It's very...
Well, I think there was some, there was some, um... There was a plan, a plan depending on whether the structure in the front came down.
Yes, that's true. So, I'm on that committee, so the plans are with the architect, so the state architect.
And you're still gonna put it in the front there?
No, it's gonna be behind, it was, oh, we had moved it to be behind Aldridge Hall.
Okay, so behind.
Yeah, so regardless of the house coming down or not, we move forward with our plans and we're not gonna change the plans, so. So, yeah, mid-November should, we should have an idea.
So, you can bring that?
Yes, they will be, yeah, presented to us again and maybe still give you the butters and so.
Okay.
Right.
Progress.
Yes, definitely progress, yes.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the permit until August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, for the Friends of Granby Veterans.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got another one here from Borrego Solar. It's here by requesting the continuance of a hearing.
Should we open the public hearing so that this can be discussed within that public hearing?
Public hearing wasn't scheduled till six, right?
Uh, six fifteen, yeah.
Six fifteen. So, we can't...
I don't know if we need, I don't know if we need, do we have to open it? So that it falls within that heading?
Technically, you're right.
Um, there was this, uh, I don't know if you all saw, this was our marijuana... Law by law that passed, and this is the, yes, you, you have...
Oh, I don't believe I saw that.
From the Attorney General.
So, did we get everything that we wanted?
They didn't change anything, they just...
Yeah, I did see that, as a matter of fact. Yeah, everything went through as...
Yeah, I thought I had said it.
As voted on.
So, the one that was voted on at the town meeting is approved by the Attorney General, so it's good. That's a good start.
Yes.
Okay, the building inspector gave me this. In regards to the property.
Would you like to see that?
Yes.
Which property?
Property on fifty-nine Ferry Hill.
Oh, okay.
Showing the location of the arena. The house, the special, uh, the barn that was granted by the special permit.
That was a joint meeting with the...
With planning, with zoning as well, yes.
Yeah.
This correspondence was dated March nineteenth. This was for the original.
The original, aye.
And this is on August eighth.
You all doing good?
I did see that, I could see that before.
So, we're gonna get another town, this is what they're doing.
Do we have, do we need the decision?
The decision.
Our decision? It's right here. And go back a few pages. ZBA is in there, too.
So, the building, the building department, Greg Briggs, the zoning code enforcer, officer, sent us a letter. I'm gonna circulate that. I don't see where they're in conflict of what our conditions are and what the original permit stated.
Wasn't the question, was it, they were conducting business there?
They, they, they're making accusations of that, but there's no proof of, that I can see from what's been sent, that there's any, any business being conducted there. And then there's a question about, he stated that he was gonna take, he was building this barn that was over twelve hundred square feet, and he was gonna remove some of the older sheds.
Right.
But we didn't, he said that's what his intentions were, but we didn't, um...
Make it a requirement.
Didn't make it a requirement that he had to, a condition of which he would have had to remove them to, to, to put the barn in, so I don't, I don't see that as an issue. There was issues with soil removal. That's not under our purview, but it doesn't sound like anybody's gonna, um... Take any action on that. He did, he did put a rink up fencing. That's, he wouldn't have had to come before us for that. And he built a, what are they calling it? A bleacher area? That wouldn't fall under us either.
But would that make it a business?
No, it could be just for family and friends to, to, to view riders.
Unless he's actually...
They'd have to prove that he's doing business and collecting revenue.
And there's nothing there?
I don't... There's nothing there that, that...
Is he address again?
Tell, what's that?
Is he address again?
Fifty-nine, uh...
Barn?
No, no, Ferry Hill, yeah. That's right on the bend.
It sits way down in the back.
Yeah.
Way down in the back.
In the packet here is the butters list for that. Oh, these are ones, yeah, these are ones I put in there. These are packets from the other...
I don't understand that. Be more a ZBA, wouldn't it?
That's what I'm saying. I don't see where it's, I don't see where it's under, where it's under zoning.
Where it's under planning.
I don't see where it's under either of those. I don't know where he's in.
Well, just the fact that the ZBA did say no business in their decision.
Okay.
Right.
So, is that, there's nothing here stating that, that there's proof that he's running a business, and he hasn't come before us asking to run a business.
Yep.
Yes.
Come on in.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good.
This is the original. And it's had pictures in here. Do you wanna look at it? You wanna go phone that?
Yeah, that's what I, I have, I have some of this with me.
The very, and the very, does that one say Kathy's on the top? That's the whole file right there. That's, that's all the original stuff.
And we have a copy of all this right here. Well, not forwarded.
Well, here's the Board of Appeals. For by law three, one oh two, no business service or industry is conducted therefrom or therein. And this, this is the one from Kathy Kelly Regan. That decision. Is dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, Kathy Kelly Regan wrote to the Brusos. Apparently, they, uh... They applied for a business certificate. And she said no, based on the, on the zoning Board of Appeals decision.
Okay, so here's the letter he sent in. In close, please find the application for zoning.
Who's that to?
Uh, this is to the Town Planning Board.
Is that a date on it?
Eight twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen.
Does it got Bob in the upper right-hand corner?
No, this is...
Written in the top corner? No, that's Kathy.
Yes.
That's Bob's packet. And that one we were first doing it.
Oh.
And you don't wanna keep, the other one with the yellow sticky on it says Kathy's? Is that what it says?
Yes.
That's all the originals?
This is the originals right here.
Yeah, so you should probably be looking at this one. And...
This is yours, or?
Well, he didn't want it when we were leaving that night.
Oh, right.
Just cause I put all the extras in there. You want it now?
Sure. That's why I didn't... I'll just, I'll just read it out. "In close, please find a new application for zoning board reviews as requested, along with additional supporting documentations that I thought would be helpful. I spoke with Vice Chair Tromke earlier in the month. He was extremely helpful and recommended I submit an application and documentation along with the new update, updated site plan for review to address the, any outstanding concerns and to please readdress the request to allow minimal business to be conducted on the property, limited to collect, limited to the collection of board and training fees. Maximum number of horses to be thirteen. What I have enclosed, new updated site plans, plan that shows everything on the property, new and old, seven copies. Special permit, seven copies. A butters list from earlier in the year." Which I believe has expired, cause that's...
Right, that's why he had to get another one.
Okay, so he did, he did bring another one, okay. Copy, copy a letter from the building inspectors dated August eighth. Copy of my letter and full set of photos dated July sixth. Please let me know if there, if there's anything else missing or needed. The best way to reach me is myself, though. I'll make sure to answer any of the additional questions the board may have regarding the, our property. Respectfully, Raymond Rosso. So, so this has gotta go, this has gotta go before zoning. I suppose it could be a joint.
Yeah, I thought that because it was a joint meeting to begin with, it should be, the next one should be a joint meeting.
Has any of this been timestamped?
He hasn't paid any more money.
So, in other words, we're not outside the...
No, we're not.
The clock hasn't started ticking to hold the hearing.
Right.
Okay.
So, basically, he's, we can have a joint meeting, but we can't act on anything on a site plan unless it's, unless zoning approves it.
Because the violations, so to speak, are not anything that are, that we specifically stressed.
As, as far as I know, he's not in violation. He's asking, now he's asking that he wants to do minimal business there. In other words, I think he's bartering.
So, whole new?
Yes. Basically, what he's asking to do is to create, to allow a business to operate there because he's, he's, it sounds like he's bartering stable time for training.
Yeah, that's gonna sound a lot better here.
Which, I don't see where that's an issue.
Is there such a term as minimal business?
No, but that's what he's, he's just describing what he's, what he's doing. If it gets approved, we're gonna have to, to put conditions of what the minimal business means. No more than thirteen horses, no more than X amount of people in, at their, at a certain event. There's something along those lines. This, this all stems from one or two of the neighbors having concerns about it. So, we're gonna have to get back to him and have Kathy get back to them and let him know that he's gonna have to, um...
Have a public hearing?
It's gonna have to be a public hearing, a joint public hearing between us and them. Cause if they allow it to happen in that zone, then we're gonna have to approve the site plan for what he's doing there and what is, and put some sort of conditions on it. If zo, if the zoning Board of Appeals allows it.
So, it's going to the ZBA next?
Well, we'll do a, a joint hearing, but it's gotta go...
And, and at that time, they will, if they say just the flat out no, then...
Then we have nothing to look at.
Okay.
I'm gonna give this back to you, though.
Okay, again.
Again.
Get the whole packet together here.
Okay, well, you handed that across the table to, uh...
That was part of it. That's part of it. And you have any more? No?
Yeah, this is what I... It just passed six o'clock.
So, Kathy's on vacation for the rest of the week, so nothing will happen.
That's fine, it's not timestamped, there's no, there's no big push on it to get it done. Okay, we've got an A and R, Aldridge Street.
Yes, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm trying to stay out of trouble.
Good, Jason.
Moving the box?
Yeah. Forever laundry box.
Want us to just get the stack over here?
Ah, lens here. We're gonna move it again.
I think Kathy's not home.
Hi.
Assuming we are...
Good.
Assuming you're good. This is big business here.
I'm glad you're sitting here.
Do you have two of those?
I can photocopy these.
We need two, right?
Yeah.
Good thing you know somebody that works here.
We have the technology for it.
Okay. You know what's going on here?
I'm buying one point one acres from James. He purchased, I think, the land about two or three years ago. And I'm adding that one point one to what I have now, that sixty-eight.
Which one is sixty-eight, Aldridge?
That's...
Oh, right here?
Right there.
Oh, is this the lot cabin?
Right.
Okay.
Purchased that from Gil Carr.
Yes.
A year ago.
Okay.
So, it's all this and some part right here.
Yeah, initially, I bought the lot between his house and mine, which had several easements on it, mainly that his driveway was an easement on my property.
Yeah, and your septic system, yeah, I remember this.
So, he wants to buy, um, his driveway and septic system.
And my, yeah, my leach field was on his property, so...
After Aldridge went through all that trouble to put that, to make that work as separate lots, which was, which was a, a mess.
It was a nightmare.
It was a real, but it was legal, it was...
James, this is, this is Jim Low's old house, right?
Yeah, that's my house now.
Yeah, okay. So, so what's getting broken?
Here's the old lot.
Old lot line here. Okay, so this was one lot, and this was another lot, correct?
Yep.
And now it's one lot.
I absorbed this into my, I bought this lot and absorbed it into this one.
Okay.
Two years ago. Brought that before you guys. And then since then, Bennett's bought this house and wants to purchase his driveway and septic system, so this line represents the new property. So this line represents the new property.
Which makes more sense.
Yeah, that way you're not on easements and everything.
Right, so it does away with all the easements, so...
Yeah.
And I was actually, my row was actually on his property and the leach field was on his property, but...
Yeah, I remember that, it was on.
Twenty-second.
Thank you.
I will, it will be part of my property, which makes more sense.
The only question I have, this was originally registered with the easements. How did the easements come?
We, uh, put language in the, um, we had our attorneys drop language in the purchase and sale for, um...
To be, for the easements to be extinguished.
Extinguished upon purchase of the property. Because he's going to own all the land for the easements.
Yeah, I get, I get that, but I just want to know how it, how it gets corrected at the registry of deeds.
Yeah, we had the attorneys drop language and then they...
We didn't bring that, but they probably shouldn't.
So how much land is this involved? I don't think it says.
It's one point one.
One point one acre, yeah.
Yes, is it?
So this is about an acre and then this part here is another type of an acre.
Yeah, Aldridge got pretty creative making those two lots work.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. This is a much nicer solution.
Took us a while to figure it out, too. Took us a while to figure it out, too.
Even when I said all the property, my attorney said this doesn't make any sense.
You have another copy?
There should be five here.
Need the pen?
Yeah, we'll need that.
Do you need the stamp?
Move some.
We need three of these. We, we need four.
And two milars.
And one, and one milar, you keep the other milar, so...
I was counting these as...
No, we just, we can still sign off on it.
Okay, and then we have to get you one more?
Get us one more that we can sign off on.
How many more do you need?
One paper.
Just one more?
One more paper.
Yeah, sorry, we just had these guys here, and so they had to figure it out.
Now we're changing two lots. Making one bigger, one smaller.
All right.
So the dollar amount would be?
Two fifty.
Twenty-five dollars, too.
Very good.
So we try to check for one twenty-five?
What is yours?
Do you need the stamp or no?
No, I think this spells it out pretty well.
Okay.
One twenty-five?
One twenty-five to the town of Grand Bay.
Small space for you guys, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, not the usual space, but because of the, uh, early voting.
Oh, right.
We can't get into the field library.
You all signed that, or?
Yes.
Take the flowers.
Good.
Thank you.
Good, one more.
Definitely.
Good.
That's what this is.
Are they all done? Completed? Good. That's great.
I've been on the road.
Yeah. I've seen the hands part there. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just sorry.
Oh, I say it was a twofer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll just get another copy from George.
Bring this to Kathy's office, or?
Yes. I'll drop these off.
Oh, but when do they bring, when does he bring to Kathy's office if Kathy Leonard's not on vacation, is on vacation? How does the communication?
Chris, Chris will be there, yeah, I have to bring all this stuff to her.
Next, we have our copy.
Excuse me.
And then once you bring it over to, drop it off, um, I'll ask, I don't know, Chris will let us know, but I guess I can just keep checking to see if it's there and then we can...
He'll give it to Kathy and she'll... She'll have it here for our next...
It's one of those cards, too. I think it's actually older, if you have to sign it.
I'll let you have it.
Yes. You first said you'd turn it on, yeah? Good, quiet. That's what we like. No complaints.
This is for Denise and then this one's for them. So we're taking down the minutes. This one is. Instead of town meeting, it's town election, I think.
It is a town elections.
Yeah. So, that was the only change on that, otherwise I was...
Like the sign, the declaration?
Yeah, that is...
This carries more weight, feels like. What does it all?
You force them, you don't, like, you're working it out. I don't know, you didn't, these weren't...
Now, do you have the two for the...
Probably the garage.
I think Bob went to get a rubber band. Will I hold it? Hope that unravels and doesn't kill anybody.
So we left that. I thought that was...
They don't have any?
Nope.
That's a lethal weapon.
Is it blocked? Where's the plant?
Okay. We're doing, we need a motion to close...
I'll make a motion to close the, uh...
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting to be re-confirmed after the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time we're going to open up the public hearing at six fifteen P.M. To continue the hearing to consider the application for Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., 55 Technical Technology Drive, Suite 102, Lowell, Mass. 01851, for a special permit and site plan approval required in the following sections of Grandy zoning bylaw. Section 3.0, Table 1, Schedule for Use Regulations. Section 5.99, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations. Section 6.2, Special Permits. Section 6.3, Site Plan Approval. That contains purpose to install 6.2 megawatt DC ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility on approximately thirty acres, acre portion of parcel of land located at Zero Kendall Street. Assesses Parcel ID 8-B-5, owned by Breezy Acres LLC of 25 Pleasant Street, Grandy, Mass., which is located within the residential single-family RS zoning district.
There's a letter there asking for, uh, improvements.
So, the letter is, um...
Let me read it.
I'm just looking for a date. Date is October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, from C. Dean Smith. He's a civil engineer and is for, uh, Dear Mr. Sexton, Borrego Solar is hereby requesting a continuance of the hearing for our solar project for the currently scheduled date of October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, to the November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen meeting. This will allow time for us to revise plans and calculations in response to the technical review meeting and peer review comments prior to the public hearing. We appreciate the board's consideration. This is for...
That's something.
Something different. Any discussions?
No.
I'll make a motion that we grant their continuance to, what was the date, the twenty-sixth, November twenty-sixth?
November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
At six fifteen?
Uh, that's our choice, around about six fifteen.
Or you wanted it at six?
I guess I, I got a question before we do that.
Sure.
It states that they're making changes based on the peer review. I don't know what the peer review has asked them to do.
Um, you got a copy of the peer review?
But what, what of those conditions are they?
Oh, yeah.
Being asked to change?
And, and I think they also want to wait until they were at the staff meeting today. I didn't make that, so I don't know what happened.
Allow time to revise plans and calculations in response to the technical review meeting and peer review comments prior to the public hearing. So I don't know if there's been any peer review comments as of yet? Or they're just waiting to, to try to push the date out far enough to consider those peer review comments?
There have been peer review comments by tie-in bond.
Right.
Yeah. So, I think it was like twenty-five or twenty-six.
Yeah.
Bulleted items.
Right.
My issue is that tie-in bond did a, did a, did a review and they're going back to make changes based on what tie-in bond's review was, not based on what the board, this board gave direction to. We didn't hear them.
Right, but...
That's what we should have been doing tonight. We should have been reviewing the changes with tie-in bond and with the applicant.
Right, because they can make changes and come back in front of us and...
And we're not going to, we may not approve.
Right, exactly.
I don't know, I don't know what the feedback was from the, from the, uh, the roundtable that took place today, I guess.
Right, two o'clock?
Yeah.
So...
Susan will be presenting that at that November twenty-sixth meeting.
That doesn't, that doesn't fly with me.
That doesn't give us enough time.
I'm okay with making the extensions, but not for the purpose of them changing the plans without us seeing what, what tie-in bond is not the planning board.
Right, well, we can send a letter, too, on that. We, that those issues should be addressed in front of the board before they make any changes.
So, and I don't know where they got that direction from, but I'm okay with extending it. But it shouldn't be extended that long.
Well, they might be looking at, I think, one's a holiday, it's Veterans Day, which may, it falls on Monday. So they're taking that into consideration as well.
Well, they're taking that time into consideration because it's going to take them that long to make the changes to the plans.
Right.
I think they need to be before us prior to that sooner so that we can decide whether or not we should be approving or mandating that they make these changes based on what tie-in bond's calculations were and from the roundtable. Now, if they're off doing that now and then, and then they turn around and get more conditions based on the feedback they got from the roundtable, then they're going to be looking for another extension, potentially.
So are you proposing that we have a meeting before this November twenty-sixth date?
Yes.
Yes.
With who to be included? Borrego, Susan Westa, tie-in bond?
Correct.
And ourselves?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, the November, what is it, twelfth is the, um...
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
So we, so that's a Saturday. We can't do a Monday because that's when the town celebrates it. So the fourteenth, there's one date there that Susan couldn't make it. She can't make the fourteenth, I know.
Well, it would be good that she was there, but not necessary.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, she can't make a Wednesday. She could make a Tuesday, and I think maybe Borrego had a problem with the Tuesday. So...
Can we, we can't meet on Tuesday, the sixth, because it's election day, is that correct? We can't meet?
That is correct.
On an election day?
Right.
So then we're, we're looking at a Thursday or a Friday.
Say that Wednesday?
The fourteenth?
Oh, the seventh, which one are you looking at?
Seventh.
Seventh would be better.
Okay.
So Wednesday, November seventh. At six?
Nobody can meet with us, I mean, you want us to, to thirtieth, next Tuesday? I mean, if we're trying to look to speed this up?
Well, not so much to speed it up, I just don't want to drag out another month.
But to get them in front of us.
I want to get them in front of us before they start making changes.
We, we got to be careful when we, when we start choosing meetings because of conservation meeting as well and where are they getting packed into because the library is not available before, or until November sixth due to the early voting.
So we're the day after, November seventh.
Yeah, but we were just talking about maybe the thirtieth, the Tuesday, the thirtieth of October. Yeah, but we were just talking about maybe the 30th, the Tuesday, the 30th of October.
Oh, we were?
We were.
You were, yes.
I was. I was. Jim was.
Didn't filter down here.
It was getting there.
That's next.
That's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
I'm just thinking, if they already have their information in front of them, they've already received the information that they're looking to make changes, we should just probably meet with them sooner than later so we can.
Do we have a restriction? Is that too close of a time? Kathy's not here this week, so posting things.
Oh.
For that meeting.
Who's posting in her absence?
Nobody.
Well, there's got to be someone that's posting the meetings, why is she not here?
Yeah, but is there a minimum requirement? Is there a two-week minimum notice? You can have.
A few days. Well, it's to set the agenda.
Right.
To post the agenda. And what is it? Forty-eight?
Forty-eight hours. I mean, I can, I can do that, send it to Kathy Kelly Reagan.
Well, we got to find out if everybody's available to come before.
Yeah.
And did you say Susan is not good for Wednesdays?
Well, that particular day, the 14th.
Okay.
I don't, she has other towns she works with, so I don't know what.
So we could do either the 31st or the 7th, if we can get this room.
31st if we can get this room.
Oh, right, the 7th, we would be at the Carnegie Library.
Right.
Let's stick with the 7th, so we're at the Carnegie.
7th, okay. Okay.
Do you give them a little more time?
That's fine.
In case they get conflict.
I don't have any other scheduling problems, so.
So the meeting Wednesday, November 7th at 6? And what do you expect to have from them? You want Susan to present the roundtable staff meeting stuff? The Ty and Bond peer reviewer stuff? And Borrego has to be there?
No, just to clarify, we want Ty and Bond there. Sarah?
Sarah, yes.
We don't want Susan presenting?
No, Susan's just presenting the staff meeting roundtable.
Okay, just to clarify.
So I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing until November 7th at 6. You want to go 6:15?
We'll start at 6. We'll start at 5:30, regular meeting at 5:30, if that works.
6 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, so should I strike my motion, my original motion for the continuance regarding?
Number seconded.
Okay.
You can second this one.
Okay, I'm sorry, second. I second Jim's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Aye, thank you.
And now you need a motion to open up the regular, close the public hearing.
We don't want to close this one. Right. I'll make a motion to continue this.
You're closing the pub, no, continuing.
We continue.
Yes.
Well, you've already continued it, okay. I'll make a motion that we reconvene our regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What was the other here? It's a correspondence or something?
We already took care of that, frantically.
We got a question accomplished.
Yeah, I approved the minutes, correct?
Yeah, those are all done.
They are done. All right. What do you get whole business?
Um, there's bylaw update in there, maybe? If not, it'll take all of two seconds. No? Not on the agenda?
It is.
It is. He's just skipping by it? Is that what it is?
No, I thought you asked, is the bylaw update in here? Did he add something?
No, no, I have no, this is a verbal update.
Oh, verbal update.
I'm sorry. You're so used to paper.
Oh, I'm at it.
Um, haven't heard back from the attorney yet.
Okay.
Still waiting. These are, these are the bylaws that we worked on in May.
Okay.
And we gave it to him in July, beginning of August, and he's still looking at it. So no response yet.
We should actually follow up on that. In a couple of months, two, three months now.
And there's only three or four of them?
Yeah.
Well, he did review it initially and made some recommendations, didn't he?
No, Susan reviewed them.
Because then the request was made, or Lil asked the question, should, as you forwarded it to Kathy Leonard, does the attorney want the highlighted, or the red underlined items?
Yeah, so he knows what changed and what didn't. Yeah.
In which he responded, yes.
Yes. So he has that. He knows before and after.
Okay.
Just hasn't gotten high enough on his list, I guess.
Okay.
Well, we could send a letter from the board that we'd like an update, whether it's going out with it.
It's a letter from the board, or is Chris the one that's telling him what he needs to do first?
I can follow up with Chris, but I mean, he's reviewing it from our board.
I don't know what Chris says.
Well, Chris needs to know what he's paying the attorney for. Which is why I don't send them directly to the attorney. It goes to Kathy Leonard, and she sends them.
I'll ask Chris, we could follow up with the attorney in regards to.
Okay.
If they need a formal letter, we'll draft a formal letter.
After that, if you don't.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think Chris, he was like a phone call, asked for the bylaws review.
You want to do the open action items? I know that's your favorite thing.
See if I'm not here first.
Nope. Just me and Glenn.
Let's go for it.
You got your minutes there from September?
Uh, September 24th?
Yeah. Okay. First one is ask Susan Wester for accounting today. I have that. I don't have it, but I've asked her, so she's working on that. So it's in progress.
So I have not heard anything back in regards to... Of course, I have a secretary from high school, student, so.
No response.
Rob, we've been struggling with having to find someone that could actually keep minutes for us during our meeting, which is going to be actually a paid position. So if you haven't known anybody offhand that's being willing to take minutes at our meetings, right now, Lily and Doug's, we try to do it, so hopefully that way she can participate more in the meetings versus trying to keep our minutes. So if you know anybody offhand that may be interested in it. Not looking for a name right now, but.
All right.
We thought we had somebody.
Your initial idea was to get someone from the high school?
If we could find a student that maybe wanted to, you know, come and do it at night.
We would pay them.
Yes.
It's a paying job.
Paying job.
But they also have to be available at night.
Right.
All right.
Well, Glenn, your next action item here.
I'll look at this, huh? Fancy, fancy, fancy.
We can call that completed.
Camus, Camus.
Same part one is on top.
Yes, yes, yes. Can you see this? Does he can just see that, please?
Ta-da.
You don't want to see yours?
Yeah.
Everybody saw it. Everybody saw this already?
Yeah.
Who's done this?
Told you we got a lot of conflict.
Is that why mine's in the bottom?
Yeah. We'll make sure there's one even in there for you. If you haven't counted yet. There's actually six. There's another one that says PVPC consultant, but it doesn't list Susan's name.
So it's just.
That one we found now.
That's what we wanted, right.
It is?
Yeah. What?
I've seen her too.
Yes.
Yes.
Gee, that was your, that was your action? That was your action item, and you did very well.
I know, I know she was waiting till Rob was appointed.
And the bill to the invoice for.
Was that paid too?
Has been approved.
It's been approved?
And signed by vice chair.
Man, that's the best I did in action item in a long time.
Okay, so our next meeting is not going to be Tuesday, November 13th. It could possibly be one of the other ones.
Be the 7th, correct?
Correct. We weren't doing October.
We got to make sure we find a space. Well, no, we're going to be at the, we're going to make sure there's not another board meeting though, too, that night.
It's got to be there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the 7th is...
I don't know where the boards may meet, committees may meet there.
The 7th is a Wednesday, so we don't have to worry about conservation anyway.
No.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.